So I'll ask Mr. Baker to give the invocation and then we'll proceed after that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Please bow with me. Lord, again, we're very thankful for the people in this room today, our board members, our faculty, staff, administration, and especially our students. We pray you'll protect them over these Christmas holidays. They'll finish strong this semester. They'll be safe. They'll come back ready to learn again in the spring. We thank you for the upcoming sesquicentennial year and how you've blessed this college for 150 years. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I understand. Place flag. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Amen.
Second item on the agenda would be open forum. Do you have any one, Ms. Williams? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Number three, President's Report, President Farmer, recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and provide an employee notice. Recognizations. The first recognition of the meeting is to the Weatherford College Board of Trustees. December is Board Appreciation Month, and we have representatives from our Weatherford College Student Ambassadors here to deliver a token gift of appreciation for your collective service to our institution and our community. At this time, I would invite our Student Ambassadors to deliver a few words of appreciation.
And who are you?
My name's Noe Valientos.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. There are other ambassadors who can't be here today due to finals work or scheduling. And as a group, we would like to express our appreciation to the board for their support to the college. But most importantly, we appreciate the board for putting students first and thanking you for supporting our new president and putting students first. We would also like to appreciate your service to the community and to our college and by also acting as the board members. And we also want to thank the foundation for supporting and donating to the ambassadors and for your hard work that you've done for the Weatherford College.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all come forward and pass out the gifts this time?
There's gifts.
Okay.
I guess it's special use for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've got a puppy.
Oh.
No, 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 no.
I always tell my husband, I got your puppy.
That's a good trade-off. You jump out, hurt yourself, invite somebody in here.
Did you see it?
No, what is it?
It is. It's a picture of a...
Oh. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Okay.
With the red, with the red X.
Oh, this is nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was just trying.
No, no, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Student Ambassadors, for your assistance. And thank you again, board members, for your leadership and your service.
Thank you for the gifts.
I would like to recognize the Parker County Community Choir for a recent performance of Handel's Messiah. The group delivered an exceptional performance earlier this week. Dr. Andra Cantrell recently led a team of WC employees in the Guided Pathways Training in Dallas. I would like to recognize Board Chairman Max Smith for his participation and support of the Guided Pathways Initiative. WC nursing professor, Dr. Tola Pluznek, has been recommended for an appointment to the Accreditation Commission for Education in Nursing, A-C-E-N. The A-C-E-N Evaluation Review Panel and the A-C-E-N Appeal Panel. This national appointment is a prestigious honor for both her and for Weatherford College. Board Secretary Lila Morris recently attended a Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board 60-by-30 TX Training for Board Trustees. The conference was very informative, and Lila's support of the 60-by-30 TX Initiative is appreciated. Weatherford College geology professor, Lori Gooj, has joined us today. She and her WC archaeology students were recently highlighted on Channel 4 News for their work with the DAWSS Center on the relocation of historic log cabins. Professor Gooj and her students will soon conduct archaeological digs on the original locations of the historic cabins. Professor Gooj is an excellent example of the many WC professors that bring learning to life. Lori, would you please stand so that we can honor you today? Congratulations, Lori, and well done. Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. In accordance with this policy, the following individuals have submitted resignations. Mary Ziegler has retired as Director of Workforce and Continuing Education with an effective date of January 31, 2019. We thank Mary for her service and wish her the very best in future endeavors. Policy BBD Legal. Pursuant to Texas Education Code 61.084-F, Board Policy BBD Legal requires the minutes of the last regular board meeting held by a college district board during a calendar year must reflect whether each board member has completed the training required to be completed by the member as of the meeting date. In accordance with Policy BBD Legal, I am pleased to announce that all Weatherford College Board Trustees are up to date on all required training. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer, Dr. Pluznek. Agenda item number four, Consent Agenda and Financial Reports. We have been given a copy of the minutes from the November 8, 2018, board meeting. There's also information about the quarterly investment report, the financial reports ending November 30, 2018, the disposal of obsolete and surplus items through e-waste recycling. There's an authorization for lease agreement with Porter Burgess Company. And also, what we want to do is move the January board meeting date to January 10, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
Excuse me just a minute. I have a question about the E, the authorization for the lease agreement with Porter Burgess.
Sure.
On the very last page, it's got the customer leasing, Weatherford College, but then it has an address in the woodlands. Is that correct?
Not unless that's my new office down there.
So I think that's something that needs to be corrected before we sign it or whatever.
We'll take care of that.
You can get that done, can't you? Way to go. Let's...
I read this.
I didn't get that one, though. Well, that's great. Well, with that one detail that needs to be changed and the other matters that we just talked about and mentioning, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and the financial reports?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The item passes by unanimous vote. Number five, Consideration Possible Action Concerning 2017-18 Financial Audit. Dr. Cantrell.
Would like to turn it over to Kathy Williams from Snow Garrett Williams to present the 2017-18 audit.
Good afternoon, Board Directors. I am Kathy Williams, a partner with Snow Garrett Williams. I'm going to take you through just a few items in that large, thick report. I will not take you through all of it because you'd all be asleep before I got to about page 10. So we will just hit a few of the highlights, and I'll be glad to try and answer any questions that you may have. We'll start out in your bound audit reports on page three. On page three, you'll find the Independent Auditor's Report. It starts there with the report on the financial statements where it states that this is the report on the financial statements of Weatherford College as of and for the years ended, August 31, 2018 and 2017. It goes through management's responsibility and the auditor's responsibility. And then over on the next page, on page four, it goes into, it states our opinion there right about the, at the top of, near the top of the page where it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects as of August 31, 2018 and 2017 and for the years then ended in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles." So that is that clean or what's called an unmodified opinion that you want to see. If you'll turn now... There you go. You're welcome. If you'll turn now over to page 13, we'll start with your financial statements. On page 13, we have the first page of your statements of net position, which is like your balance sheet for the college. You'll see there that your total assets right towards the, about the middle of the page, total assets at the end of August for the college were at $98,887,403. That's compared to right at $89 million the year before, which is an increase of over $9.8 million, or about 11 percent. So a good, healthy increase in your assets. There is, there's a, there's one piece of that that's very important that you will see and I'd like to point out. We'll start at the top, we'll go back up to the top to your current assets. You'll see their total current assets increased about $3.8 million from $33.7 million to 30, almost $37.6 million. And most of that increase was in your cash and cash equivalents, that very first line item there. In your non-current assets is where you saw the more significant increase, and that is related to the investment in real estate under your non-current assets. This is the Carter Ag property. It's that Carter Ag farm. You had an increase in appraised value, and that increase was over $6.8 million. So that's a large part of that 11, of the $9.8 million increase in your total assets is related to that increase in the value of the Carter Ag property. And then, like I said, total assets at the end of the year of $98.8 million. On the next page, page 14, which is the second page of your statement of net position, we have your liabilities and the net position of the college as of August 31. You'll see there that your total current liabilities increased just slightly from $12.3 million to $13.1 million, just over $786,000 in increase. And most of that's just in your accounts payable, which is going to fluctuate from year to year. Your non-current liabilities increased significantly from the $20,221,000 to $32,689,980. That net increase in non-current liabilities was just over $12.4 million, and most of that is related to that line item that I spoke to you about a few months ago. You'll see there you have what's called the Net OPEB liability, which is the Other Post-Employment Benefits. And that is a new liability that's required to be recorded by, by all governments, but the college being a governmental entity. And that, that liability had a balance at the end of August of $14,594,958. So that's the largest increase that you see in that liability section. You also had some new capital leases payable this year for computer equipment. And then those were offset by just your normal debt payments. So that, the increase in those items are offset by your regularly scheduled debt payments. And then at the bottom of the page, you'll see your total net position at the end of August 31 of 2018 was $51,353,631. So it did have a net decrease, but that decrease was not as large as it would have been with some of these other fluctuations that we saw. If you'll turn now over to page 16, on page 16, you will find your statements of revenues, expenses, and changes in net positions. You'll see there that your operating revenues, it starts out, it goes through your revenues, operating revenues, operating expenses, and then non-operating revenues and expenses. Your operating revenues for last year were $23,906,000 compared to $15,149,000 the year before. Most of that increase is, again, related to that change in fair market value of the Carter Ag property. That's included in that auxiliary enterprises line item. And you'll see there, that's where you've got the largest increase in your operating revenue. You've also got tuition and fees had an increase of over $820,000 for the year. And then I also like to point out, the local grants and contracts, even though there wasn't much change from year to year, that's where the Wise County Branch Campus Maintenance Tax comes in, is right there in that $2.9 million number. So your total operating revenues for the year were $23,906,884. And then we have your operating expenses. And I found this very interesting. Your operating expenses for the year, they were almost flat. They were relatively stable. If you look at the operating expenses for fiscal year 17, were $43,213,894. And your operating expenses for fiscal year 2018 were $43,497,873. So it was less than a 1 percent increase. It was about $284,000 of increase from year to year in operating expenses. And that's where you see, you know, your largest operating expenses are instruction costs, as well as institutional support and operation and maintenance of plant. Those, that makes up over 72 percent of your total operating expenses. When you take your, your operating revenue minus your operating expenses, you have an operating loss, but that's before some of the most significant revenues of the college. And this format comes straight from the state. They tell us to put it in this order. Because your non-operating revenues, that includes your state appropriations of over $11 million, your property taxes, as well as your federal revenue. Those are federal grants of over $6.5 million. So all of those things go into your non-operating revenue, which resulted in a net non-operating revenue of over $31.5 million for the year. And when you put that together with that operating loss, you actually had an increase in net position from, for 2018 of $11,993,049. So the other thing I found very interesting when I looked at these numbers, you know, just kind of seeing it all pulled together, was that even if you didn't have that increase in the Ag, in the Carter Ag property, that fair market value increase was about $6.9 million. And even if you didn't have that, the college still would have experienced an increase in net income for, like a net income number for this year. So I thought that was a really good thing to see, was even if we pulled out that larger number, that it still would have increased your net position.
Exactly.
And then your total net position at the end of the year is at $51,353,631. And that's after that cumulative effect of the change in accounting principle that's related to those other post-employment benefits, which we won't see those severe swings after, you know, going through that this year. It just had to have a starting point. So you should not see that severe of a swing in the, in the net position and that big of an effect on your financial statements unless they come up with another standard to throw at. But you shouldn't see anything, anything that large related to the other post-employment benefits. If you'll turn now all the way back to page 74. There's a whole lot of footnotes in there and some detailed schedules that you're welcome to go through. Again, all required by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. But on page 74, you will find your schedule of findings and question costs. And I'd just like to point this out because it's a really good summary of all of the, all of the reports that are included in here. And it starts out with, you'll see the, the auditor's report on the financial statements, which was the first opinion that we, letter that we went through, is unmodified. The auditor's report on the compliance for major programs was also unmodified. And then all of those items checked no on the right-hand side of the page are saying that there were no findings or question costs related to either the financial statements or your federal awards. So that's, again, those are those good, clean opinions. That's what you want to see, was that we didn't have any findings to report to you.
And we are low risk audit, too.
That is correct. And that, that's based on, you have to have single audits, which is for two consecutive years, and no findings in those single audits. So that's how you be, and you have always been a low-risk auditor, too. So. A lot of information. I know I've gone through it really fast and just pulled out some of the highlights, but I would be glad to try and answer any questions if you have them on the financial statements. You also have a couple of loose letters in the back of your financial statements. One of those is the management letter. And again, we didn't really even have any comments to put in here. So we just have a reminder that, you know, the college has a lot of really good, on the second page of that management letter, you have a lot of really good, strong internal controls throughout your organization. And it's just very important to continue following those. So we encourage all departments within the college to continue monitoring and adhering to established internal controls. Following those policies and procedures as adopted and approved by you, the Board of Trustees, is a vital oversight function that assists in maintaining a strong and effective internal control environment. So again, it's, we've had this in there several years, but I just think it's important to remember, you know, circumstances can change and systems can change, but it's still important to have those controls in place.
Are there any questions for Ms. Williams? Anyone on the board, any comments?
Thank you for all you do.
Well, thank you very much. And we appreciate all the help that we get from Dr. Cantrell and her staff. They really do a great job on getting things ready for us. And I told them the other day, answering our questions, working with us. And, and we like to try and be available during the year, too. Just, just like, you know, when we needed to come to you a little bit earlier and talk to you about some changes in this year's financial statement. We never mind doing that. We enjoy working with you, and, and we're glad to have that opportunity.
Well, thank you, Ms. Williams. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Y'all have a Merry Christmas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Happy. I say Happy and her team, Kimberly, here today.
Yes. This is Kimberly Burden. She's a manager with us, and she has done an amazing job as well getting this all pulled together. So thank you.
Kathy, how long have you done these?
For a while, but you guys go out for, out for proposals. This, we just got re...
I mean, you've been here as long as I've been here. You've always...
Not as long as I've been here.
And I, I don't just say this. I mean, we really enjoy working with you guys. It's, it's nice to come into an organization that has policies and procedures in place, that understands accounting and has sufficient staff to take care of things. And it's, it's really nice to, it's nice to come out and, and visit your offices and, and work with your people. So.
Here, here.
Thank you very much.
Rebecca DePue is in another meeting right now with the Lucian Core Group and couldn't be here, but I'd like to recognize her, too. She's the controller, and she puts in a lot of hard work working with these people. Couldn't do it without her.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Now, this is an action item. Am I correct? Okay. No questions or comments. So is there a motion to approve this?
I salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. That motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a suggestion that we take this report and send it to Mr. Phil King and to Mr. Pat Fallon so that they can understand what a good job we're doing here. And so whenever they start looking at potential financing for this upcoming budget year, I think if a letter should be included that well-run institutions should be rewarded rather than penalized.
Way to go. Way to go, Roger.
Yeah, that's gonna happen.
I mean, that's just, I, I, that's one of my things that I'm just very, very big on is we should be getting money for doing a good job rather than poorly-run community colleges, getting extra money because they're not doing a good job.
Amen.
And the, and with Mr. Fallon being the new state senator, I think we need to let him know what we have here and what a wonderful place it is and how well we run this place. I'm sorry, how well y'all run this.
Y'all run this place.
I have a meeting with him Tuesday, and I'll deliver one to Senator Fallon myself.
Here, here.
And he sure will get one.
He will get one the following week.
Not, not even hurt to have a letter from Snow Garrett Williams about what she just got through talking about.
Is Senator Fallon on our campus?
Before my arrival, did he come?
He has been on campus.
Not since I've arrived.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's a good suggestion, Mr. Bizar. To item six on the agenda, Consideration Possible Action, Order Regular Election for Board Trustees, place one, place two, Special Election for place four. And you see what the information and discussion would be here? Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. I can speak to that. As you know, we have an election May the 4th, and so we asked the board to go ahead and call the election in today's meeting. Chairman Smith mentioned the places that are up. Place one currently held by Mr. Smith. Place two currently held by Mrs. McAnally. And place four currently held by Mr. Bizar, which would actually be a special election to fulfill an unexpired term. In your packet are some of the dates, early voting dates, early voting locations as well, as well as the information about filing for the board positions. And the election would be, as I said, on May the 4th.
Okay. So you see the recommendation is, is there a motion that the board approve the order of election for the general election, special election for May 4, 2019, as presented? Is there such a motion?
I salute. Oh, I salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. Number seven, Reports, Sesquicentennial Update. Mrs. Edwards?
Good afternoon. I'm Mrs. Edwards, Director of Creative and Economic Services. I have the PowerPoint. I'd like to thank everyone who's been instrumental in the planning of the 150th Anniversary Celebration so far, including the Steering Committee, members of various subcommittees, and faculty and staff who have, of their own initiative, found ways to honor the college's history in the classroom and beyond. This is a college-wide effort as we attempt to make sure everyone knows the importance of this year and has an opportunity to participate in some way. We're also very grateful for the support and enthusiasm of Dr. Farmer, who has joined the Steering Committee and has energized us with his ideas and his excitement. I don't want to take up too much of your time, as we have a year's worth of events, some of which are still in the planning stages, but I will touch on some of the highlights. January 17 kicks off our celebrations with the kickoff reception in Texas Hall from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. There will be a chamber ribbon cutting, a historic photo show, and other Weatherford College items, archive items will be on display, some giveaways, and the opportunity to pick up your pictorial history book, Weatherford College: The First 150 Years by Alon John Vandergrift. January 28, we will have a birthday party for our students, faculty, and staff beginning at 10:45 in the morning on the quad on the Weatherford campus. There will be birthday cake giveaways, presentation of awards for the 150th 3D Numbers Project with all entries on display. We'll be working with satellite campuses to host a birthday party in conjunction with one of their campus cookouts later in the year and to see how else they would like to celebrate. The 3D Numbers Project is a contest where Weatherford College departments and student organizations have taken an eight-inch set of numbers to decorate as they choose either through school spirit, representation of their department, or history of their organization. Awards will be given for best representation of a department, most creative, most Weatherford College spirit, and best overall. February 16, there will be a basketball reunion at the afternoon basketball games. We hope to also recognize all past pep organizations at that time. There'll be an ice cream social after the men's game for all attendees. February 28, we'll have a reception honoring board members past and present. February 28 through March 1, Weatherford College Interdisciplinary Academic Conference created and organized by Dr. Scott Karaniewski. created and organized by Dr. Scott Karnevsky. And March 23rd will be a family picnic with a carnival and musical entertainment with alum Wynne Williams, followed by a home baseball game. April 5th, we'll have a gathering of retirees in the DOS Student Center for a reception, followed by a concert. It's all about the music and the Al Kek Fine Arts Center. The Baseball Booster Club is working on having a fireworks display after their baseball game on April 6th at Roger Williams Ballpark. April will close out with several music and fine arts productions, the alumni, the annual Alumni Awards, Dr. Stamatys' successful Earth Day event, as well as an event on Arbor Day that will include planting of trees to replace those that have been lost to disease and ice over the past several years. The fall will include a Pioneer Week to honor Weatherford College's beginning and follow past W.C. traditions of Pioneer Week. The Kaio Chase Race along with another family picnic, and the Bell Ringer's Ball, a special Weatherford College Foundation gala, much like the first Bell Ringer's Ball 20, 25 years ago. We hope many of our departments and student organizations will take advantage of some of these existing events to gather their alumni for many reunions. If you walk across the campus, you'll see some signs of our preparations for this year-long celebration already up, like the 28-foot banner on the academic building, and another banner on the Boyd Technology Department, bookending the quad. The banners on the softball field fence at Martin, College Park and Martin. You can already see our car decals on faculty and staff cars, and you'll soon see some of our community, some of our community's businesses' doors. After winter break, we'll see light pole banners with the 150th logo on campus and in February elsewhere in the city of Weatherford.
Yeah.
Workforce Education has volunteered their duly truck, which has been wrapped with the 150th Anniversary Art and will be on display throughout the community, as well as in community parades for the coming year. I welcome you to continue checking out the WC150.com website, as we will be adding and updating events throughout the year, as well as alumni videos and testimonials. We're all looking forward to this upcoming year of celebrating Weatherford College, its past as an institution and the many people whose lives it has changed.
Are there any questions or comments?
Good job.
Yes, very much.
Good job, Mr. Pan City.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Thank you.
All right. Information and discussion would be Agenda Item 7B, and that would be Mr. Indy and Mr. Butler.
Thank you.
Demand study report, yeah.
We have a PowerPoint presentation that's gonna load up.
All right, thank you.
Look at that. Good to go. Okay. Do you want to push the buttons? I don't mess this up.
I've risen to the level of my great incompetence. I need an army of people to move me forward. Luckily, we've got great faculty and staff and partners who help us to do good things here. Today, we're going to talk to you about our demand study. Go ahead. Let me go over the timeline quickly. It was in December of 2017 that the Board of Trustees, largely through Dr. Marlett, asked us to engage in a demand study. In March of 2018, we provided you a profile on Wise County and what's going on there in terms of its students and what opportunities we have in terms of industry. The term "demand study" for us means what industry needs of education and what we look at to determine where we could offer a viable program where we have enough students that it would be financially feasible, feasible, and reasonable to do, and where those students could go out and get reasonably well-paying jobs in industry. So in August of 2018, we provided you data on national, state, and regional, from rational state and regional sources, on vocational and workforce area needs. Again, need study to us indicates that, but there's more that we're going to talk about. In October of 2018, we had our superintendent's meeting locally at the main campus, where we talked about what they would need of us, including surveying their CTE opportunities, that's Career and Technical Education opportunities, and us providing them a comprehensive list of what they teach and what they might be able to share, and we're developing that utility, and it's ongoing. We'll keep that and maintain that for our partners. We also did the Wise County update with Dr. Mar, Dr. Omira, talking about what he's been doing in the community and trying to get at the lower level, a deeper dive to find out what's going on in our school districts and with industry partners in Wise County to determine what their needs are. In November 18th, when we came and visited with you, it became clear to us, probably because I'm a little bit slow in the uptake, that we needed to do more than just the demand study. We're actually looking for a comprehensive program review. We need to talk about our partners. We need to talk about our opportunities. We need to look at our overall philosophy for how we gauge the institution's performance, which is a much larger project than whether or not somebody needs welding in Wise County. So that's the, what we've begun to work on. And as of today, we're providing you an update on what we've been doing and where we're going moving forward, so you know what we're looking at, specifically with regards to program assessment. High school to college matriculation and student success is a big issue for us, and trying to develop a unified model for evaluation of our performance and prediction about what we will do and what we need to do to improve our performance as we move forward. All of this is pointing toward routine academic updates for you, so we would hope that in the future, you'll agree that rather than talking about demand study, we'll talk about routine academic updates for the Board of Trustees, something along the lines of what you do with the financial audit. You will determine for us how often you need to hear from us on those issues and what sort of information you're looking for. Today, we're going to talk to you about what we look for and give you an idea of where that is. So go ahead. Today, for example, we looked at responses to training and employment opportunities within our region as identified with state and national data. And what we know is that there's an oil and gas demand in our area. That's not surprising. Business and professional services, we have manufacturing needs, and educational health services among our high demand occupations. In response to that, Weatherford College has funded a number of initiatives. The top one on the list, Engineering and Computer Programming Partnerships with Tarleton State University, was a product of Dr. James Espinosa reaching out to Tarleton State University and a good deal of help from Dr. Farmer to help us to form that partnership. It's rather unique. It's in its foundational stages, but we have a lot of promise for that. And rather than talking about students transferring here or there, we're talking about sharing students between institutions, Tarleton State University and Weatherford College, to advance them in that very specialized career. And I'll tell you that if we tried to do that alone, we couldn't. We wouldn't have enough students, and we wouldn't be able to provide them the education they needed to stay here. So it's a wonderful opportunity coming out of one of these investigations. We're also developing opportunities, as you know, in Health and Human Sciences in our BSN proposal. We are working on, actually, we have a jet grant proposal in the works for phlebotomy expansion. We've just added a new phlebotomy instructor, full-time instructor. Human Service Provider, expansion of WCWC. We attempted that this semester. We'll be putting it back on the books. That's our Drug and Alcohol Addiction Counseling, those courses. Vet Tech proposal is in its final stages, and we'll go off to the Southern Association, I believe, sometime this week or next, with the BSN proposal, which is due later. That will happen, I believe, in March. Along the lines of manufacturing, the workforce education area under Dean Cruz is working on a construction trades program, which we're hoping to partner with some of our local high schools that have construction trades areas, so that we can provide that without adding to the physical plant needs here at Weatherford College. Logistics, Mr. Hayden Harbaugh helped us to develop a logistics program and has a jet grant proposal that was involved in that with, I believe, Mineral Wells ISD is asking us to partner. And the automated industrial maintenance technology program that we're looking to start, that's fixing robots, I tell me, which we're, we're looking for an NSF, that's a National Science Foundation grant. So we've got our folks in workforce education working hard to expand our abilities to serve our community in what it needs in workforce and to serve our students so that they can get reasonably well-paying jobs and careers. That's what we're going to do. So, current study activities. Right now, the biggest activity that you and I are aware of, because it's happening at a granular level, is we've designed a model to generate accurate projections of educational and financial efficacy. Dr. Farmer, when he arrived, asked us to look a bit differently at what we do in education, so that we could become more financially responsible. And I tell you, that was very welcome, but a little surprising to us on occasion. Mr. Butler has walked, worked with Dr. Cantrell's folks to make sure that our numbers are true, so that we have single source of truth and it is accurate. And right now, we are using that model to identify improvement targets for underperforming programs. That is critical. We're not looking at getting rid of things. We're looking at how we make them as financially responsible as we can, so that we're approaching revenue neutrality in the operation of these programs. We aren't insisting that everything is money. We're trying to make ourselves financially responsible in operating educational opportunities. We're also doing, for all personnel requests moving forward, we use the same document as a base for all personnel requests in Instruction and Student Services. So whether or not it's in a teaching position, we're asking about the efficacy of the position. Why is it needed? What is that person going to do? Do we have other options to fill that need? Is it effective use of resources? And finally, we plan on incorporating this model into all analysis on an annual basis of our programs and how they perform. Now, they've been doing program review for years across our college, but we're asking them to look at it a bit differently in terms of financial, financial responsibility. And we'll show you an example of this. Okay? At this point, I'm going to start talking to you in ones and zeros, as Cynthia Masterdiakamo used to accuse me of doing. Here's a sample, very small, of the model that we've developed. The areas in yellow are parameters that faculty, deans, and vice presidents can alter. They involve the number of students in the program. They involve how much attrition they expect to have. Let's see. In this particular model, because we're looking at developing a program where some of the students are under a tuition exemption, we've got some who pay tuition, some who don't, so we have to factor that in there to find out if we're going to be revenue neutral. So all of these parameters can be set by the end user. What we do is look at the types of tuition, because it's not one size fits all as far as tuition goes, and we determine what proportionality that the program typically has historically in a particular tuition type, do the math, and multiply out what we can expect to earn in tuition based on that. We also take into consideration contact hours, the funding rate for contact hours. We also factor in administrative costs down here, so that not only are we, you know, determining how much it costs just within the department to offer the program, we also estimate its impact on the rest of the institution and the resources that we need to allocate to the program therein. So what we get out of this, in this particular instance, is in order for this program, and it's a paramedic program, to be revenue neutral based on tuition rates, contact hour funding, et cetera, and their proposed budget, they need 24 students in their cohort with about a 3% attrition rate. And they'll come out roughly within probably about 5% margin of error at $10,000 over what they budget. And while it's not an exact science, no projections ever are, it is a way for us to model possibilities. And it gives us a place to start, where we can go and ask questions and review budgets and things of that nature, and make determinations as far as the appropriateness of the program in this particular respect. There are other considerations that go into this as well. This is just one leg of the stool. So, given that, let's move forward. Current study activities. High school to college transition research. High schools are critical to us, because that's where our people come from, for the most part. A lot of them come from Parker County area, but when we look at this data, we have to find out, you know, how many students are coming here? Are they ready for college? Do they proceed accurately? Are they doing well? Do they stay? Do they persist, et cetera? All of this data resides in our Enterprise and Resource Planning System, the one that you just gave us the money to change and improve. And that's critical, because with that change, it opens up a window into the data that we've not had before, and we'll be able to chart the information over time in a way we've not been able to do previously. The second element is a Weatherford College Post-Secondary Intense Survey. This spring, we're going to partner with our area high schools and survey graduating seniors for what their plans are after they leave high school. Who wants to come to college? Who wants to come to Weatherford College? What do they want to major in? It's a fairly extensive survey, and I can provide a copy if anyone is interested in reviewing it.
Yes.
So I'll provide that. But it will give us that opportunity to see how much, what we present, or what we provide, aligns with what students are looking at doing. Sometimes there may be opportunities there that we weren't aware of, and that's what we want to get to. Finally, National Student Clearinghouse Data. For any student who's come through our programs, we can track their performance in college after they leave Weatherford College. And we can find out, did they persist? Did they succeed? What did they major in? What college did they go to? Now, one of the things we know from this data set is that the majority of our students transfer to Tarleton State University. We feed them a lot of students. So having that information gives us an idea of who we need to align our curriculum with and optimize our transfer rates and opportunities for our students. So, any questions at this point? Yes, sir?
In regards to the survey, is this all seniors?
High school seniors at our area high school, our service area high school.
And is that administered through the counselors or through, how do we?
Yes, sir. We'll work closely with counselors. The survey is online, so it's a web interface to get to it. And we'll partner with our fellow institutions and the counselors to get the appropriate protocols in place to administer the surveys and then collect the data and analyze it.
So out of a, say, 500 seniors at Weatherford High School, how many do you think will actually take this survey? Or would you?
The rule of thumb on survey research is you're really chopping high cotton if you get 10% response rate. We hope to get better than that.
Yeah, my only, this is my point, is I, I think it's awfully important that we get a good cross-section of people. In other words, we need not only the top 25%, we need to know where the bottom 25%, how we can help those people in terms of workforce.
Right, understandable. What we have to do, though, as far as any kind of survey like this, it has to be optional for the student with no result, no consequence, no negative consequence for refusal to participate.
Why does it have to be optional?
Because it's the human subjects protocols put forth by the federal government to govern human subjects research, and we have an institutional review board that governs all research that involves people. And in order to protect them from any kind of negative psychological impact, we have to make it so that they have the choice whether or not.
Negative psychological.
Well, the original, the original source of this is the Nuremberg Trials. This comes out of Nazi Germany.
Nuremberg Trials.
Yes, sir. It's a response to what the Nazi bosses did to people.
Well, it looks to me like that, that we ought to try to get 100% to take the survey.
So can we do positive reinforcement? Can you, can you offer a cup of coffee at the student union or just something of a very nominal retail value, just to encourage some kind of?
We can incentivize it, and we can work with counselors and local ISDs to do that. But we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to cross the line, because it's federal regulation. We want to provide encouragement, but not requirement.
We discussed this before, and the problem comes up with getting counselors in high schools to respond. If you, if we can do that some way or the other, and as smart as you guys are, I mean, and as energetic as everybody is and as interested as we are in getting good quality information, we ought to be able to put some pressure on at least, we can do it in Wise County probably, that all these counselors must get these surveys to the students before they leave there, and that's a requirement before they graduate. They have to fill out these things. We can get 100% response that way if we, and there's that gigantic if, you know, if, but get the counselors to cooperate. And that's, that's the avenue to do that is through these superintendent meetings we have.
Would it possibly, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know if you could do that or not.
We actually did have this superintendent's meeting. I met with all the counselors, have passed out this survey, got feedback. We actually talked about doing more than just seniors, possibly according to the Lord's guidance, to give us more, you know, data for projecting programs. So we're working with counselors already.
I think it, y'all have probably talked about this, I'm sure, but I think it's going to be important on which semester you do it, whether you do it in the fall semester or the spring semester.
The intent is in the spring.
Yeah, because they're going to be more focused on what they're doing.
Yes, sir.
Needs to be right before they close, open the door and then walk out and close. Needs to be right before they close, open the door and then walk out and close it.
Well, don't most colleges have the same survey that they're using in one form or another?
No.
They don't?
No, not necessarily.
How would you make?
We're developing this in-house.
Okay.
They've been developing this in-house. We have an avenue through our dual-credit instructors who are ours.
Yes.
To encourage students to complete the survey.
That's what I was going to say.
We certainly have good relationships with our superintendents, our counselors, and our principals. But to be clear about this, they are not our students, and we do not have the legal authority to compel them to participate, and we would be walking a very fine line to attempt to pressure them.
Well, we wouldn't try to pressure them.
But we're going to do everything we can to make it available, encourage them to do it, and help them to understand why this survey data will be valuable not only to us, but to them as well as they work with their students and try to guide them.
Mike, don't we get some information from the students? What type of information do you get from each student who takes the survey? I mean, is they, they just step in, or is there any information they give you?
Yes, sir. As far as the survey goes, we ask them their classification so that we know where we're starting at. We ask them their plans.
Yeah, yeah.
Do they plan to go to college? They plan to join the military, get a job? And then work there. Questions are conditional. They still want the answer. They get a different set of questions about colleges, about Weatherford College specifically, programs they're interested in. So we get a whole survey or a whole assay of those characteristics.
And then, if you get a database, then you can basically log date that information, you know, and say, okay, if 10% of the students, you know, if some answered this way, a whole bunch of others would with the same background, you know?
Right.
So you can?
Yeah, if we can, if we can establish the right sampling methodology, we can refer to the rest of the high school population and say, if there's 10% of the sample doing this, there's this chance that 10% of the whole group.
Does one gender respond better than another? Does it, is this gender dominant? Does one gender tend to respond better than another?
Not necessarily. Sometimes it depends on the actual topic you're surveying over. If you ask questions about childcare, it's going to get a stronger response from your females. If you're asking questions differently about other majors or something like that, it'll go the other way. So it's variable.
Well, I think I'd like more information after, after this and then revisit this at another time. This, I think this is an important issue.
Sure.
And I think it's a source that we need to really look at hard. I don't think we're going to try to pressure anyone, but what we're going to do is offer a service to try to identify where we can serve people that are coming out of high school more effectively.
Amen.
And could, could we have a, I mean, I'm a paper person. I think you know that.
Yes, sir.
Could we have a copy? Could you all send us kind of this stuff in an email so we can? Okay, I really would appreciate that because I've been trying to take those, but I can't get it all.
Our Bridgeport Education Foundation gives out scholarships, and we require a letter of thanks coming back to the Bridgeport Education Foundation, and they don't do it, you know, maybe 20% until we got the administration to agree to say to the counselors, you get your, you get it when we get our letter back. And that's the kind of thing I'm talking about here.
What we're planning on doing, let me jump in here. Is providing you routine updates on these kinds of projects rather than spending a much more of your time today. What we'd like to do is bring you specific projects that we're working on, what we're finding out already, and what input you want to provide us, because it's vital that the Board of Trustees help to guide us in your governance role in what you're interested in knowing about and what level of detail you need it so that you can help us in our management of the institution. So as you determine for us how often you need to hear from this, we'll be providing you this, this information and at the level of detail you request. This is a public institution, and we aren't hiding anything. Just want to be aware that this is a sensitive process and sensitive information. We have partners all through our service region, and we want to respect them and their educational endeavors as well, especially our partner high schools and partner school districts. A few more slides, a few more numbers, and then we'll be done. So one of the things that we do in order to understand our context a little better is go out and look at census information, and we look at Bureau of Labor Statistics and things of that nature. And what I provided here is a comparison of five counties in no particular order for 2016 and 2017. It's the cohort of students 18 to 24 years of age. This is relevant because here's our average ages. With dual credit, it's 22 years of age; without, it's 23 years of age. So this is a group that we depend on to come to college and that we want to offer services to. And we can see that what pops out immediately is that men go to school far fewer, at a far lower rate than women across these five counties. The interesting thing about this is that in all these instances in this age cohort, men constitute a greater percentage of the total population. So, and we can see, you know, we can identify a problem. It's County B. In 2016, men attended college, Weatherford College specifically, at a rate of 2.7%. It went up to 4.77% the next year. Okay? So, and you can see, you know, women are attending college at a fairly high rate, over 10% in almost all cases. So whenever we drill down a little bit and we look over here at County B, over this period of time from fall of '13 through fall of '18, 75 or 84% of them actually take the Weatherford College. So we have that working in our favor. But again, your context, here's your breakdown demographically for the 2017 group. And out of 851 potential students, 9% attend Weatherford College in this age cohort. So these are the kinds of breakdowns that we try to perform on our population to understand who are our possible constituents of students and how can we best reach out to them to provide them opportunities. So moving forward, what we need across the board is a way to evaluate a lot of different processes on this campus, whether it's students moving through courses or information moving through departments or whatever you want to say. If it is time-bound and it moves from point A to point B to point C, I think we have a method that we can do this. So we need an objective evaluation process. We need access to accurate, consistent, relevant data, identifiable and measurable outcomes. Not only do we need to define student learning outcomes, we need to define organizational process outcomes. What are we accomplishing outside of instruction? And how do we measure them? Because they need to be measured, measurement of meaningful and actionable outcomes. So we define the workflows, and this is critical because as we implement the new ERP, we're entering a brave new world where anything is possible. If we can imagine a way to do business better, to facilitate student success and meet student needs, this system more than likely is going to be able to do it. So we want to take everything we know about the old system, put it in a box respectfully, say, where do we want to go? And take it from there. Establish objective data collection mechanisms. Now, part of this is going to be through the Campus Labs tools that y'all approved. And as we roll those out, we'll have access to this type of data to look at processes in our advising and in our instructional area as well. And then organize the data in a model that lets us see current state but also allows us to predict within a certain measure of error what to expect. Now, one of the things that, I had a conversation with Shirley Brown, our chair of our math department, and we're partnering together with one of her faculty members to develop a model that will help us do this. And here's what it's based on. It's a directed acyclic graph model. Anything that goes from point A to point B to point C, there's a proportion of success as you move along. The full proportion is the product of the two. And that's about all I'm going to say about that because it turns into matrix algebra real fast, and I don't want to teach that today. So.
Don't bother.
Ooh, I just got hives.
But the whole point is, is this is a systematic process to look at what's happening at our institution, what is guided pathways, and looking at cohorts of students moving through that. We can say this proportion of student completes the first phase, this one the second, and we get an overall proportion. We establish a standard of 70% like we would foresee. Anything above that, we're pretty good. Anything below that, we start disaggregating data and finding out where the fail point is. Where are the students falling out? And with this, we can do a method of branching trees that allows us to follow the students who do drop out and see if we can identify the parameters that might have contributed to that loss of the students. So that's where we're trying to go with this assessment model. And as we move forward, all the data that we collect becomes a part of this in order to help us understand how our students are progressing through our programs, how our processes are working to better serve those students. So for your needs assessment, what we've done so far is fairly foundational. It was the base definition of needs assessment, and we've done a fairly good job of it, and we're making progress with it. But to move forward, we need to thank you for getting us the tools that we're going to use through Campus Lab and the new ERP because they're going to allow us to look for things differently than we ever been able to and bring us not only up to our peer institutions, but hopefully with your collaboration, bring us beyond that. But to do that, we need to share with you what we think determines the institution's success and failure from the perspective of our faculty and our staff and our students. And we need to know from you what you think you need to know about this institution so that you can provide us effective leadership in where you want us to go. What kind of objectives do you want us to pursue? What is the overall philosophy of the institution? And how does that articulate through Dr. Farmer and the rest of us to what we actually do to facilitate students finding options to improve their lives? So if there are questions, we'd be glad to answer them now.
Will there be a copy of that sent to?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I really would appreciate that.
We'll provide that to Teresa, and we'll provide you, if you need more data, like examples of the paramedics breakdown, if you want to look at other things, we'd be glad to share those documents with you. We just don't want to mire you in a bunch of documents you don't really need to look at.
Remind me, you spoke really quickly, and I didn't write quick enough, about the Vet Tech program dates, when or what are the next endpoints?
Vet Tech has been approved by the state of Texas as of this month.
Okay.
And it is now going to the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools in December, so it will leave before we leave.
Hopefully tomorrow.
Hopefully tomorrow. Their board meeting of the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges is in July, where they will either authorize us to, to offer the program or tell us we need to modify something. And then we have approximately a two-year window in which to initiate the program under the Southern Association's authorization and the THECB authorization. Those authorizations do not compel us to begin to do something. They authorize us to start.
So if I'm understanding correctly, and I apologize if I'm not, we send it tomorrow, hopefully, and then they don't look at it till July?
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, you know, the reviewers, they have reviewers that come through, and hopefully they'll contact us, have their statement on.
Okay.
The reviewers port it to the board.
Okay.
In July.
Okay.
It's approved, but it's being reviewed and read and.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry to interrupt.
And the nursing program?
It's due March 1st. It's a little change, so we've got a little.
Yeah, it's bigger.
And it'll come March 1st.
But has it, has it been approved by the state board yet?
No.
No? Not yet? Okay. Thank you.
And we have to send that approval in to SCS. So it's got to be approved by the state.
And the timeline for that is? And what's the timeline for that, to the state?
I think it's been submitted.
Yeah, that's what I had understood. Okay, okay, thank you.
That document requires signature by the doctor, Dr. Farmer and Mr. Smith. I believe they're signing today. It will then be digitized and sent to the THECB tomorrow.
Oh, fantastic.
All right. Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions? We apologize for taking so long, but we appreciate your time and your attention.
I think it's important. But I was going to say, this survey, whenever we go to the different high schools for college nights, if we could possibly encourage those people that come up to our table to fill out this survey, it would be very helpful to us for a very specific group because it's not just all the seniors. These people have shown an interest in Weatherford College. What can we do to take you to that next step?
That's an excellent idea, and I'll ask Adam's group to make sure that we have a note there, because they can do this on their phones. We can just have the link there for them, and that's an excellent idea. Thank you.
They can do it on their phones.
Are there any other questions or any of the comments or any of the guidance you'd like to provide us on the demand study?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate this.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. 7C guided pathways report, Dr. Cantwell.
Thank you for hearing me today. On November 14th through 16th, Weatherford College representatives attended the Texas Pathway Institute Number Five, which was supporting students on the path at the Hilton Anatole in Dallas, Texas. We were very fortunate this time to have our board chairman, Mac Smith, and president Dr. Farmer as part of our team. Other team members included Adam Finley, Donnie Purvis, Kay Landrum, Shante Severe, Dr. Sarah Locke, Greg Schrader, and myself. This was a very cross-representative group of the college. All divisions were represented. The institution focused on support for students as they progress along their pathway. Once again, there were outstanding speakers at the session from across the nation who have experienced firsthand and been instrumental in making the changes necessary to move toward a culture of change and a mindset of student success. The institution included sessions on academic advising and understanding the impact on student success. The Math Pathways awards were presented. The Texas Success Center recognized five Texas community colleges for their work implementing and scaling mathematics pathways. The awards were given in conjunction with the Charles A. Dana Center at the University of Texas. Also, Dr. Farmer attended a session of the Aspen Institute Best Practices. I don't know exactly what all went on in that session. It's very private, only presidential meeting that we're really not privy to, so I'll let him explain that one. Addressing student needs, basic needs with a culture of caring, and most important, I believe, were the team strategy sessions, which included a session on where do we go from here and with visions for our next steps. I think those were very eye-opening to a lot of people. We enjoyed having Mac available to us there, and he gave really good insight with us for your perspectives out there. It's real important. We talk about where we've been. We talk about what's going on here at the institute now, institution now, that might be an obstacle to students and how we might improve those sessions. Faculty and staff have expressed their appreciation when we returned last week for the core team meeting, basically that the Board of Trustees had been so supportive of this guided pathways movement. They said it was a, they felt it was a beginning of a new culture here at the college, the fact that they all knew that you all cared and believed that they were doing their job and trying to improve. And that was very refreshing to everyone that was speaking at that meeting, and I just wanted y'all to know that. The Weatherford College Guided Pathways Core Committee continues to grow as we meet on a regular monthly basis and as we continue to work toward a fall 2019 implementation of the new college software as well as a new student advising and enrollment process. The goal of this new process is not necessarily to reduce the number of steps a student completes, but rather to ensure that entry experience appropriately guides students onto a structured, efficient pathway with a student-end goal in mind. One of the things that we talked about in our core meeting last week was the need for a follow-up. We really, when we sit down and look at the first institute and some of the goals that we had in our short-term action plan, when we looked at them, we felt really pretty good about it for the first year, the things that we wanted to do. We wanted to make it a known factor on campus while we were trying to accomplish, to get the board involved, which I feel very great about this. I really do. I think with your support is why it will succeed. And so we have meant a lot of things, but we recognize that we needed a project management tracking system. So we, the goals that we had for this, we would fulfill and where we were in meeting those goals. And I believe Adam Finley, Greg Schrader, and Lee, I think, and they have developed that bar so we can just go down and are looking at what we've completed. I've got it here if anyone would like to review, but we've come a long way in a year. And I think talking to other schools at the institute, that was recognized that we have come a long way. We've moved pretty quickly as compared to some of the other schools that have been on there two or three years. But with all this in mind, it's very important, I think, Tanya Edwards spoke to the group last week, and she said a lot of the faculty are still unaware of what the ERP system, the guided pathways, and where we are with all of these things. So we are having, going to have an emphasis working with the faculty and giving them definitions of term terminology with the new system and just explain to them how important the ERP system is to the guided pathways, but what role all of it plays in the end. in the end to student success. So we are working on that and getting that together for them. And that's one of the things that we've recognized, too. We, we're moving along at a pretty fast pace with these institutes and trying to keep up. Well, we, we started with faculty back last spring, but, you know, we're thinking, well, the groups are working within themselves and coming along. So in order to do that, you know, I, I brought it up to Dr. Farmer, I think it's going to be real important that the vice presidents in each of these areas do our own pushes. Doctor Indy, Vice President Indy has done a good job staying on board, but from, from this point forward, I think I'm going to probably turn a part of it over to Vice President Indy and Adam Finley, the executive vice president, to say what's going on in each area, because that is so important that we keep abreast of all of those initiatives that are going on, and that their people know and understand exactly how it all works and fits together. So we are, we've accomplished a lot, and we're very proud of where we are, and thank you for taking part in it.
Thank you, Dr. Kentle. We'll move to number eight on the agenda, future agenda items or meetings. President Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick announcement. Next month, we will be looking at the approval of the 2019-20 academic calendar, so we'll be bringing that to you in January for consideration and approval.
Okay, thank you. Announcements, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. You see in your packet the upcoming events. You all know about tonight's event, the employee awards dinner at the Springs at 6:30. We have our two-week Christmas break coming up, beginning on December the 21st. There's actually a typo in your packet. It says we reopen January the 4th. We actually reopened January the 7th, so January the 7th...
Oh, I wondered about that, yeah.
Yes, and then when we come back, the basketball teams are in conference play, and, and they really start to heat up. And then, don't forget about January the 17th. We'll remind you at our next board meeting, of course, but that's our 150th anniversary kickoff reception, as Katie told you about earlier. That is from 4:00 to 6:00 at Texas Hall.
Thank you, Doc, Mr. Baker. So agenda item number 10 is closed session. At this time, we will end the public session, and we will convene again into the closed session in probably about two, three minutes. We may need to take a little bit of a break. The posted agenda has all four of the categories that we are dealing with in closed session, and I'll ask Dr. Farmer to, to join us, and also Mr. Curly. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move back into open session. I'll call that part of the meeting to order, and we will, we'll take up agenda item number 11, consideration possible action of real property. And that, without going into a lot of detail, is a lease amendment to a cell tower on property owned by the college. And the lease amendment, and the document that amends the lease has been circulated and looked at and approved by all of the, the members individually, and there are no questions about that. And so what I would ask is, are a motion, well, I'll just make the motion that we sign and approve that lease as it's presented concerning the cell tower. And is there a second to my motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We'll move to number 12, which is consideration and possible action personnel matters. It's a two-part consideration here. A concerns an instructor who is in good standing but not able to return to the position that this person has due to an illness that has continuing complications. And so my motion would be to terminate that employee because there is not the possibility that that employee can return to the position and teach in, in the manner that he's been doing. Is there a second to my motion?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That, that's approved. B is a, a little bit more involved, and what has been discussed is that we have adjunct pay that is paid in a particular way now. And there's been discussion and consideration given to whether or not to increase that adjunct pay in a particular amount. So my motion would be that we approve an 8 percent increase going forward in the adjunct pay to people in those positions.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I might just suggest that we amend that to include overload as well, adjunct and overload pay.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. Does everybody understand that?
Yes.
Okay, so that will be, now be my motion. Is there a second to my motion?
A second.
Oh, you got it.
That's fine.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. The second part of item 12, agenda item 12, is a bonus payment, which would be to full-time faculty and staff this year, bonus payment to reflect the time of the year.
And that, that's something that we will...
You don't want to vote on that?
That's something we'll handle administratively, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I think, excuse me...
But I thought we were going to...
We were just going to discuss that with the board so that you had knowledge of an executive action.
Okay.
I apologize if I didn't communicate that effectively.
But did, did we say the adjunct and overload pay is effective for the spring semester? I don't, or not? I don't think we said that.
I have this question that we need an effective date.
Effective the next semester?
Can we?
Yes, effective the spring 2018 semester.
Okay.
2019.
2019, thank you.
Now, stand corrected on, on the other one, but are we in need of approving that before we move forward on our executive order?
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
I will come back to, with you all, with a budget amendment to approve that.
Okay. Do we need...
A budget amendment.
Are you suggesting that'll be on the next agenda?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So agenda item number 13, I make a motion to approve the annual evaluation of the college president that we have, that the board has discussed and, and, and now ask approval on. Is there a second to my motion?
A second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And my final motion is a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
Here, here. Here, run.
All in favor, say aye.
Say aye.
We're adjourned.
Happy Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Happy to y'all.